All right, we have started.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to our July 1st, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to start with our Pledge of Allegiance. EJ, do we have a flag?
Maybe. I don't have control of the screen right now.
Okay, well, we don't really. We don't really need one, so that's okay. Well, I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Can you see my screen?
We can see the flag now, Madeline, yes. And I was wondering if you could put the agenda up for me, too, please?
I am doing that now.
Thank you. Okay, great. EJ, would you like to give us an overview of the virtual meeting protocols?
Sure. So, welcome to all of our attendees. Apologies for the late start. We had a long discussion in executive session. So, for those of you who are watching or listening, we cannot see you or hear you. You can see and hear the board and myself. If you have any questions or comments throughout the meeting, there is a question function on the GoToWebinar platform, so you can just type in your questions. And if it's a question on a specific agenda item, please feel free to type it in at any time, so we can address it when it comes to that specific agenda item. If it's a general question or comment, non-agenda items, we will field all of those at the end of the meeting under public comment, but feel free to type them in at any time. So, any comments or questions you have, type them in at any time, and we will field them at the appropriate time. And we did actually receive a couple of email questions in advance of tonight's meeting that we will address under public comment as well.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. So, moving on here, our consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, the June 3rd, 2020 business meeting, and the June 18th workshop meeting, and the acceptance of the reports, all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of June 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so I made the motion, and Susan had seconded it. Do we have any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Martha, could I just ask that you do a roll call, since some people are audio-only?
Oh, okay, absolutely. So, as everyone can see, that we have EJ Mentery on video, myself, Susan Garrett, Mark Donovan, and Russ Benner, and Bill Brennan is on audio, as well as Bob Cooney, and that's all we have at the moment. Oh, and Madeline, too. I'm so sorry, Madeline, I forgot you. And Madeline, our secretary, is on audio as well. So, I don't think we have anyone else, so.
We're good. Yep.
Okay, all right. Our Treasuries report and payment of bills for the period ending June 29th, 2020, the consideration of acceptance of the Treasurer's report and approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so Susan, you beat everybody to the punch again with that second. So, I made the motion, and Susan seconded it. And EJ, I'm gonna hand it over to you for our Treasurer's report.
Sure, thank you. Since we've just hit the halfway point of the year, I'm gonna give a little more detailed Treasurer's report, if you'll allow me, but bear in mind that we don't quite have all of our financials yet. Some come in a couple of weeks. We're still waiting on some big statements. So, the Treasurer's report is actually through June 28th, as opposed to the end of the month, just to allow us enough time to run the numbers based on what we had. So, the general fund balance through June 28th was $4,381,507, which was a slight decrease of about $11,600 from the previous month. It is, however, an increase of about $372,000 from the same point last year. All of the other township funds increased or were unchanged for the month of June, except for our Capital Road Reserve Fund, and the main reason for that is because the curbing program was completed in June, and about $75,000 came out of that to pay for the curbing. As far as our revenues, we're at about 52% of our budgeted revenues for the year, so pretty much on track halfway through the year, and that's $3,815,000. It's less than $3,000 apart from where we were at the same point last year in terms of revenue, so right on track with that. We've received about 94% of our real estate tax revenues through June, which is pretty standard that we have most of it. It comes in in the first half of the year. One bright spot so far is our real estate transfer taxes are actually up. We did budget more conservatively, so that could explain that. But at this point last year, we only had about 35% of our real estate transfer taxes, and right now, we're at 61%. So, surprisingly, you know, the real estate market is still moving along with everything that's been going on, at least in Spookel Township. Our EIT is down about $107,000 compared to this point last year, and that's the general fund EIT only, not counting the open space. However, our June EIT revenue was almost identical to last year's revenue in June, which would seem to indicate that the COVID-19 effects of furloughs and layoffs that resulted in the decreases in April and May have kind of rebounded. And so, June's EIT was right on track. So, you know, barring any further setbacks with, you know, a second wave and potentially more business closures or stay-at-home orders, the numbers would at least initially seem to indicate that the employment revenue, at least from the EIT, has rebounded and is getting back on track. Overall, we're still on track to hit our budgeted numbers, though, for EIT. And again, that may, even though we're down compared to last year, we can budget conservatively, so we're still on track to hit our budget number for that. As far as expenditures go, we've spent about 31% of our budget halfway through the year. So, while revenue's down a little bit in some places, our expenses are also down compared to the budget and compared to the same point last year. So, we have been very mindful of spending, given everything that's been going on. Overall, the budget's in good shape. Pretty much all the line items are in order. There's nothing that's out of whack at this point through the year. I reviewed all of the bills. The bills are in good order. I would recommend payment of the bills as well, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for EJ? No? So, there was a motion made and a second, and there's no questions or comments. Is EJ, is there anything, any questions or comments from the public?
No.
No? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Two-minute reports, Board Liaisons. Susan, do you have any reports?
Just to commend our EAC, they did a wonderful job going to the Preserve and cleaning up a lot of the plants that are not native to the area, which is a big project. So, they've done a great job trying to keep up with that there.
Okay, good. Mark, do you have anything?
We had a discussion with the PRC, PRPC, about, a group came in, I don't have my notes in front of me. A group came in and discussed Ready for 100. They've organized, and they gave us the rundown on what they're gonna do. They're looking for funding to get a grant, and I did discuss this with Martha there. So, we can discuss this more in our workshop session later in the month.
Okay, all right. Bob, do you have anything as a Board Liaison?
Just that we have some good things unfolding with the Historical Commission. We've made some real good progress with the new owner taking over the Anderson Farm that's starting to clean up and prepare to restore the barn there, which is a huge breakthrough to have that. And then, we have real good progress on Oakwood Lane. There's an old historic building there. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to drive by, but that looks beautiful. And hopeful that the Rossiter House will stand, based on the new owner taking over there, and as well as some of the other buildings in the back that were at risk, yet more to be determined there, I think. But a few good things. The ticket booth in the park looked beautiful. Signage is being put together for that, and we just had some work completed with the interior painting on the ticket booth in Valley Park, which Diane inspected today, so I'm waiting to hear back from her on that. But a lot of good things moving in the right direction there.
Okay, good. I know Valley Park is on our agenda, a little bit lower, but there's some things that I wanted to discuss about that. There are a few of the park amenities that have already been installed. Some of them are still on back, well, I don't think they're on back order anymore, are they, EJ? I think they're on order.
They're on order, correct.
They're on order. So, they are on their way. I know there was some things that were on back order, and Nick said that he would get to those and install those sometime after the holiday. Nick, EJ, and myself did meet with Jim Morrison regarding the Trolley Track Exhibit, and that is also going forward. So, within the next month, I think we're gonna see some good changes throughout Valley Park. So, I'm very excited about that. So, there's no other two-minute reports. EJ, do you have any two-minute report?
What do you think? Of course I do. I have quite a few.
You have your own line item here on the agenda, so I'm assuming you do.
Yeah, I have quite a few, and several of these were just added today, so I'll try to go through these quickly. Just to follow up about the EAC, they're working on an energy audit or assessment of our energy and electricity uses, usage. So, I did sign an authorization form and provided that to Jonathan today, which will allow the person he found who will do this assessment for free access to our PICO accounts to assess our energy usage. A follow-up from the workshop on, there were some questions about 1422 Tullamore Lane that were brought up at the workshop. I did provide the board with an email update from LTL, which basically indicated that when they were out there back at the beginning of May, they were told one thing, and then the contractor ended up doing, what they were told was that the retaining walls were smaller than they actually were, which is why a permit was not required. Come to find out, they built much bigger retaining walls, which do require a permit, so they've been instructed to stop work and to get the necessary permit before they go any further. And then, going at the same time with that is their grading permit, which has been submitted, and our new engineer, who I'll introduce shortly, they have been reviewing the grading plan and permit as well. So, just wanted to give an update on that at the board's request from the last workshop. The office is closed on Friday. That's our designated 4th of July holiday, so just want to remind everyone of that. We did receive a traffic calming request yesterday from residents on Moore Hall Drive who have concerns about their road being used for excessive cut-through traffic. So, how the process works, they have to submit the request and get the required number of signatures, which they did. I need to, I haven't had a chance to review it yet. It just, it came into the general mailbox yesterday, and then I saw it today. So, I need to review it with Nick and the chief. We need to conduct some traffic counts and speed counts and take a look at the accident data, the historical accident data, and then kind of put together our data from those studies, and then determine, you know, whether or not any traffic calming is warranted, and if so, it'll come back before the board for approval. So, that's just quick and dirty, how the process works. I also wanted to give an update on our road program. I did mention in the Treasurer's report that the paving was complete. That came in almost right at the budget number, about $300, I think, short of the budget number. The paving program came in $255,000 under budget. So, the celebration there, there were no issues. Nick and his guys and our equipment rental contractor did a great job. I don't think we got any complaints. And so, kudos to Nick and the road department for doing another great job and for coming in well under budget. Couple of other things. The next edition of the Township Newsletter, Madeline is working on that. The deadline for submission for any articles or content is August 5th. One of the agenda items, I just want to give a quick update, that was taken off the agenda, the tax overpayment refund policy that we were gonna discuss. The more we've looked into it, it's much more complicated, and there's a requirement in the law that basically says if there's an overpayment and we don't refund it, we have to start tracking interest on it after so many days. So, we're trying to see if there's a creative, easier way to address this. Otherwise, we just might not change it at all, because to do that would make more work than to just cut the refund checks and get them out. So, stay tuned for more on that. And then, the last thing I have, which I just want to mention this, and then if the board wants to discuss it, I would suggest bringing it up under additional business. But we did receive the request from Suburban Archers, which is the hunting group for the Preserve, for permission to hunt the Preserve again in the 2020-2021 season. There is some additional information. I know the EAC discussed some concerns with the tree stands. Madeline has their annual report teed up, which will shed a little bit more light on that. But basically, the tree stand that the EAC was concerned about is not from Suburban Archers. It was either put up recently or was left there from the group that used to hunt the Preserve, because the group that we allow to hunt the Preserve now does not use the permanent tree stands that drilled near, you know, that you actually have to nail or screw into the trees, and they remove all of their equipment as soon as hunting season's over. And they've actually gone through and removed some of the other equipment that was left there before they took over the deer management a couple of years ago. So, and I haven't had a chance to provide that update to the EAC as well. I know they'll want to know more about that. But Madeline touched base with the representative from Suburban Archers today, and he actually offered to walk the Preserve with the EAC, so they could identify some of the issues of concern. And, you know, they confirmed that they don't have any equipment there currently, but they basically said if the township gave that permission, they would remove anything that's there that we don't want to be there. If you want to take that up under additional business, actually authorize, you know, authorize them to hunt this year, you may do that, or you can, you know, wait till next month, since the request just came in.
No, I'd like to walk that property with them, if that's gonna happen, EJ. I know the land pretty well down there, and there's a piece that's owned by the fellow across the street that actually juts into that property, and want to make sure they're not looking at some of his equipment, because there's always been a controversy there, but I'd like to be involved in that. And I'd like to get a list of the archers that are hunting it and do a little more research this year, because I think we approved them, and it's been working well, but I'd just like to stay on top of it and see if anything's changed from who they originally used and who they have there now.
Yeah, EJ, if I could make a recommendation, I think we should put this on next month's and not vote on it this month. Put it on next month's agenda.
Agreed.
Is that everything?
We'll try to coordinate that walkthrough with Bob and the EAC and anyone else who wants to be there then, before next month's meeting.
Okay. All right. Is that all you had, EJ?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Board discussion items, introduction of our new Township Engineer, Russell G. Benner Jr., PE. Can we just call you Russ?
That's fine.
Okay, all right.
Welcome aboard, Russ.
Yes, welcome aboard.
And I'd like to thank the board, too, for the appointment. It's nice to be able to do what we refer to as in-person these days. So, I'm glad I had the opportunity, we have the opportunity to do that. Really excited, really looking forward to, you know, to working with the supervisors, the residents, EJ. You know, we've already jumped into the pool, so it's going good.
Good, awesome. All right. Update, the COVID-19 updates, building reopening updates. EJ?
A few things to go over here. We were tentatively planning on a soft reopening of the building for Monday, July 6th. That's gonna be delayed now, possibly as early as Wednesday, July 8th, but it might be delayed a little further. There's a couple of things that we're trying to get in place. One is, we wanted to get a full clean and sanitizing, disinfecting of the entire building before reopening. That's scheduled for Monday. Another thing that we're trying to do is the company that manages the FOB access system and our alarm system, to get them to upgrade that with an intercom buzzer for the main entrance, which would essentially allow us to keep the front door locked, and visitors could use the intercom to buzz inside. And if they have an appointment pre-scheduled and, you know, should be allowed in the building, we'll have the ability to buzz them in without actually having any township staff having to go out and interact directly with them. So, we've been in touch with the Protection Bureau, that's the name of that company. Their service tech who manages our account and these types of upgrades was on vacation. He's back on Monday. We, they've been told that this is a high priority and a time-sensitive thing. So, I mean, it still could potentially take a couple of weeks, but we hope to hear back from him on Monday. They seem to indicate that because we already have the FOB access system, the wiring is already in place, so it shouldn't be too difficult of a job, and we have no idea of pricing yet. So, obviously, it's all gonna come down to pricing, but I'm just, I'm trying to get some systems in place to minimize any potential risk or exposure to township staff and also for the public. When we do finally settle on a date to reopen, it is going to be by appointment only. Masks are going to be required for anyone coming into the building. They will have access to the lobby area only. And we're still going to strongly encourage anyone who requests an appointment, that if whatever they need can be done remotely or virtually, or even, you know, with a video meeting, we're still gonna encourage that and push that as much as possible to minimize the amount of people coming into the building, plain and simple. You know, we just want to minimize the traffic as much as possible. So, I wish I had a firm date, but I don't at this point. I'd like to get some more of these protocols in place, if the board's okay with that. In the meantime, staff is still working full-time. Nothing's changed. Basically, a hybrid of in the office and working from home. We really haven't had any issues with that. So, you know, we're continuing to do everything. We're just maybe delaying opening, the soft reopening of the building a little longer, unless the board feels differently, then we can certainly adjust.
Now, EJ, I actually wanted to, this is just my opinion, and I think anyone else can just chime in as well. Take the time that you need to do it right the first time, and we want everyone to be safe. We want our employees to be safe and feel safe, and we want the public to be safe and feel safe as well. So, if you have to hold things off, I'm personally okay with that, and I would assume that the rest of the board would feel the same way. Anyone have a comment on that? No? Okay, all right. So, EJ, it's in your capable hands, and we will leave that up to you. The one request that I do have is if we could just keep our residents informed as to what's happening at the Township building, either, you know, via Facebook or our constant contact emails, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Kudos to Madeline for doing such a good job on the PR front during these last few months. She's been really managing the communications really well.
Yes, she has. Thank you, Madeline. Okay, new business, Valley Park Municipal Park Improvements Project. Consideration of Approval of the Payment Application Number Five, the final payment, in the amount of $39,605.50 to James R. Kenny, Excavating and Paving Incorporated. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so I made that motion, Madeline, and Mark made the second. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Was everything resolved? Oh, go ahead.
No, actually, Bob, I think you're gonna ask the same question that I was just gonna ask. I wanted to make sure that everything's done.
Yeah, you go ahead first.
EJ, I'm assuming everything was done on their punch list, and we don't need to see, well, I don't want to say we don't need to see him anymore, but he's finished, and he doesn't have to come back, so everything's been done on his punch list?
Yeah, everything on the punch list is completed. This, just to give you a heads up, one of the things that's required in the contract for final payment is that they supply the Township with an 18-month maintenance bond in the 10% of the original contract amount. Just got that today, so, you know, I'll just need to review it to make sure it's good, and then I'll release the check for this final payment, and then, and that maintenance, that 18 months will commence from the day we give them the check.
Okay.
And EJ, what is that amount on the maintenance bond?
Thirty, $34,064.25, so that represents 10% of the contract amount. So, it was about $340,000 was the contract.
Okay.
This payment amount, the final payment is $39,605.50.
Did I say the wrong amount?
No, I just, I wasn't sure which number Bob was asking for, so I gave him all of them.
Okay, okay.
No, no, yeah, I was asking how much was on the bond, so, yep, we're good.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? EJ, do we have anything from the public now? Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Discussion, the Valley Park Grants update. EJ?
Yeah, we have two grants for Valley Park, both $100,000 grants. One is from DCNR, and I did include an update in the Dropbox on that from our regional advisor. Basically, to close out that grant and submit for reimbursement, we need a final site inspection by the regional advisor, which is tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday. And then, assuming that that goes well, and just, that inspection is just for the grant scope of work. It's not like the full construction inspection of the whole project. It's just what was approved for in the grant. And if that goes well, then we just get all the documentation and the paperwork together that's required and submit the reimbursement request, and hopefully, there are no issues. So, I would definitely anticipate getting that this year, within the next few months, hopefully. The second grant is the grant from Chester County, which we've already received a partial reimbursement for. Off the top of my head, I don't remember. I want to say it was around $70,000 of the 100. To submit the final, for the final reimbursement, the outstanding issue with the Conservation District may hold that up. I did hear back from Judy Thomas today, who's kind of like the grant manager who has overseen this, and she indicated that they would want to, they would probably want to wait until the corrective action plan is approved and the modifications are made, and everything is working and approved by the Conservation District before they approve the final grant reimbursement. But she said to touch base with her again in two weeks when she gets back from vacation and see if maybe there's something. If that process is gonna take several months, maybe there's something they could do to either give another partial reimbursement or not. We're not gonna lose the money. It's just the timing of it is what's up in the air.
So, what's going on with the Conservation District? And I'm trying to be nice.
No, that's fine. So, the corrective action plan was basically the proposed modifications for the infiltration burn that's not working, which has been the subject of conversation for several, you know, several meetings over the last eight, seven or eight months. The firm that was holding the water that was supposed to infiltrate and wasn't functioning properly. So, we had a series of calls and back and forth with the Conservation District, and they basically suggested submit this corrective action plan, which is a modification to the design that was approved as part of the permit. which is a modification to the design that was approved as part of the permit. And they actually suggested what corrective actions to put in there, which is basically change the seed mix in the berm from a dry seed mix to a wet seed mix. And then, there's also a drainage pipe in there that originally was designed to only be opened in like flooding situations, or it's not meant to be open at all times. And so, they basically suggested to screw like a small hole in the end of it to allow for a slow drain when the water fills up. And to have, yeah, but, yeah. So, those changes are things that we can, you know, Nick and his guys can do. The corrective action plan was submitted. We have to wait for them to approve it, which they should, because
They recommended it.
Was what they recommended, but I have no idea how long that's going to take. And then, the second component that may stretch this out is specifically the planting of the wet seed mix might have to wait till the fall or possibly even next spring until it's appropriate planting season, which would delay our ability to close out the permit until we can plant that seed mix and it works, and then they can close it out. So, that's kind of where we're at. And our, like, our person from the Conservation District, who normally oversees Schuylkill Township, recently left about two weeks ago, so we have a new person now. He's been super responsive so far, but it may take a little longer for him to, you know, familiarize himself with this project. But that's where we're at. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bob.
I was just going to say, the depth of the overflow pipe, has that been mentioned or discussed? Is it deep enough that I know we need to put a reduction, you know, a bushing or something on the end to allow it to throttle the water out? But is that low enough where it's installed now?
That has been discussed, and that issue, Nick actually raised that same issue and concern. And we did discuss that with the Conservation District, and their response was basically that that could be an option, but that would require a lot of additional engineering and possibly regrading of the whole berm. And so, their suggestion for a cheaper and simpler option was to try these two things first. And then, if they don't work, we could do something that's more involved. But they recommended these two modifications in the hopes that they would work. And, you know, like I said, Nick and his guys could do these, and it would be inexpensive, and hopefully it would work.
Does any of that not being engineered or built correctly fall back on Kenny excavating and paving, or was this an engineering issue from the start?
I think, no, so there were, there were issues during construction that Kenny fixed. At one point, there were grading, there were mistakes to the grading of the berm, and they were required to fix them because they didn't build them. They weren't built to spec, and so they fixed those. What we think the issue is, is possibly related to the height of the water table this past spring after the rainy season last year, that there just wasn't enough space for the water to infiltrate because the water table was so high. There had been, I think, two rounds of perk testing, which I think prior to getting the permit from the Conservation District was required, they reviewed it and deemed it sufficient. And then, I think, again, prior to construction. So, based on the testing that was done, it should have met the infiltration requirements, but when the rubber actually hit the road, the water just wasn't infiltrating. So, that's our guess, but I don't actually know. Russ, I don't know if you have any thoughts or any other ideas?
Yeah, the only thing
Really familiar with this at all, but...
No, but the only thing I would think about is if they did the perk test, that's one thing. The other thing, the other thing they should look at is soil profiles to see if there's any signs of high water. If it is a seasonal high water table, you can dig a little bit of a trench two or three feet deep, four feet deep. You can look at the soil profiles and see if there's any evidence of that. And then, the only thing, the only thing else I was thinking about, if there's any soil that was moved in or out of the location of that infiltration berm, could that have affected it? I'm just saying, not knowing if they brought some, you know, clay type of material or material that didn't move from one part of the site over to that part of the site, could that have affected it?
So, basically, I guess we just have to wait for the weather to cooperate. Is that what I'm hearing, EJ?
I think so.
Okay, all right. Fortunately, it's not the entire dollar amount that we're waiting for. It's just, you said that we already received $70,000. It's $30,000?
Yeah, I think so, roughly. I don't know the exact number, but yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, let's pray for good weather and keep your fingers crossed for good weather. So, okay. Does anybody have any more questions or comments about the grants? Do we have anything from the public, EJ? No?
No.
Okay, discussion, Valley Park Next Steps and the Future Phases. EJ, do you want to start with this, or would you like me to start with this?
I'll start and explain why this is on the agenda, and then Martha can give a little bit of history. So, this is actually, goes right along with the conversation we were just having with our, dealing with the Conservation District. NPDES permit for this site, you know, once the corrective action plan is approved and in place, and hopefully those things work, and then we are ready to close out the permit. An item for the board's consideration is that when this park was first conceptualized many years ago, there was a potential Phase Two construction that was envisioned, which included some additional driveway, parking lot, additional impervious cover, require additional stormwater management, et cetera. So, kind of what I wanted to take the board's temperature on is whether or not there was really any potential interest in pursuing that in the near future. If so, it would make more sense to keep the NPDES permit open and basically just submit for extensions instead of closing it out and then having, and then if the board decided they wanted to do this, we have to apply again. And it would just make much more work, and it would cost more money. So, if the board thought they would want to do this, then we wouldn't move to close out the permit once we were ready. We would kind of keep it open just in case. Martha?
Okay, so just to give you guys a little bit of background about this second parking lot. When the task force was first put together for coming up with a concept plan for the park, there was some disagreement on the amount of parking that would be needed for the park. So, because of this disagreement, they weren't getting any further with anything, so they decided to come up with a compromise. And the compromise was that the initial parking lot that exists right now today, right next to the trolley station, I think that's eight spaces if I'm correct, seven or eight spaces, that would be built. And then, if for some reason, the parking lot would be consistently full, then we would consider, and only then would we consider, building the second parking lot, which is down, if you look at the picture that's up on the screen, it's down, as you go into the driveway, it's down onto the left-hand side. But the only way that this would be built, and the only way that this would be agreed to, to even have it onto the concept plan, was that it would be built only if the original front parking lot would be consistently full. I personally am okay with closing out this permit, because I personally do not see that we will ever have our parking lot consistently full more than eight cars, but that's my opinion. So, I'd like to have the rest of the board discuss this and give me their opinions, too. Susan, do you want to start?
Sure, I agree with you, and I don't think we need another parking lot. Every time I've been there, I mean, it's the only one. One, there's one other person, maybe once, there's been two other people, so I think we're good.
Okay, Mark, your comments?
I don't see any merit in the second parking lot.
Okay, and Bob, your comments?
I'm with you guys, no need for it.
Okay, all right. So, EJ, do we need to make a motion for this, or just?
No, I'll just, I can just instruct the township engineer to, when the time is right, to move forward with the notice of termination to close out the permit.
Okay, sounds good.
I agree with your decision, by the way. I think that's the right call.
Okay, good. All right. Can we go to page two of our agenda, please? Okay, thank you. Consideration of Advertisement of Ordinance 2020-02, Amending the Township Code by Creating a New Chapter 98, Article 3, The Nuisance Created by Animals. This is just for the advertisement, okay? I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions from the board? No? EJ, do we have any comments or questions from the public? Sorry?
No.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Consideration of Adoption of Ordinance 2020-03, Amending Chapter 340, The Traffic and Parking. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Madeline, I made that motion, and Mark made the second. Do we have any comments or questions? Any comments or questions?
Can you give a quick overview on what that is?
EJ, do you, um, do you want to comment? Wasn't that just the one where we added stop signs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to pull it up real quick. So, this, this amends the traffic portion of our code to add speed limit signs on North Spring Lane and North Forge Manor Drive. The roads have been posted for 25 mile an hour speed limit. And then, also to add stop signs at the southern intersection of Springview Lane and Foxcroft Lane slash Windcroft Drive in the Fernley Development, which will make that a four-way stop. It's currently a two-way stop.
Okay, none of these are changes in speed limits. You're just posting what the existing speed limit is, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. EJ, do we have any comments from the public on this?
No.
No? Okay. Any more comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of Adoption of Ordinance 2020-04, Adopting the Regulations for the Use of the Township-Owned Parks and Open Space. I said that wrong, excuse me. Ordinance Number 2020-04, Adopting Regulations for the Use of Township-Owned Parks and Open Space. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Madeline, Mark actually beat Susan out with that one. So, I made the motion, and Mark made the second. Do we have any comments or questions from the board?
Again, could you speak to that, just an overview of what that one is, EJ?
Actually, I can make a comment on that. That was our, the parks' rules and regulations that we passed.
Got it.
Okay. I'm sorry, not that we passed, that we asked to advertise, okay? Sorry about that.
And that did pertain to all open space, not just the parks. I know we originally started this based on, I guess, Valley Park, and it's for all property, all township-owned property?
Yes. Yes, this will be for Valley Park, the Pickering Preserve, and what everybody calls the Schuylkill Township Park, which is the property that's right behind our township building. And then, any future parks that we would have, if we were to have any future parks. But right now, it's just for those three properties. Okay. EJ, do we have any comments from the public or questions from the public?
No, we do not.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 2020-21, Amending Resolution Number 2020-03, The Schuylkill Township 2020 Fee Schedule With the Addition of the T&amp;M Associates 2020 Fee Schedule. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. EJ, do you want to make some comments about this for us?
Sure. We adopt the fee schedule every year at our first meeting of the year, the reorganization meeting, and we always include the township's consultant fees in the fee schedule, because those are sometimes billed to developers or, you know, homeowners doing projects requiring consultant review. So, we have a new township consultant, T&amp;M Associates, so this is just adding their fee schedule to the township's fee schedule. It's just, it's a cleanup matter. It allows us to bill our costs to developers and
Okay, all right. Does anybody have any questions? Do we have any comments or questions from the public, EJ?
No.
No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 2020-23, Establishing a Traffic Impact Advisory Committee. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second? Okay. This has been how long in the making? All right, so I made the motion, and Bob seconded it there, Madeline, for you. So, EJ?
Martha, Martha, may I interject a moment?
Sure.
That motion should be revised instead of traffic impact. It should say transportation impact. Is that correct, EJ?
Yeah, that's right. I didn't catch that. Where, I was advised by the traffic engineer with McMahon to try not to use the term "traffic impact fee" and refer to it as a "transportation impact fee." So, very minor change.
All right. Okay, so, I will amend that to say, the Resolution 2020-23, Establishing a Transportation Impact Fee Advisory Committee. So, I made that motion. Bob, do you still want to second it? Okay, so there you go, Madeline. We have it corrected. And EJ, would you like to make comments?
Other than I'm going to pop a bottle of champagne after this meeting, a break that's finally getting done. This will officially commence the Act 209 study process for the Transportation Impact Fee Study. This establishes a seven-person committee that we have been recruiting for and trying to put together for about 10 months. That's the advisory committee that will have a series of meetings with the traffic engineer from McMahon Associates, review their work, and will ultimately make recommendations to the board for adoption of a Transportation Impact Fee ordinance. The entire process is estimated to take between 12 and 18 months. What this resolution does is it establishes a, in addition to establishing the committee, it establishes an interim transportation impact fee of $1,000 per PM peak-hour trip for any new development that comes into the township between now and the date that the study is complete and the ordinance is adopted. So, assuming the board votes to approve this, we will submit an advert, two advertisements. We're required to advertise twice, public notices that the board has adopted this and that the committee is in place, and the board intends to adopt the transportation impact fee. And then, I will be coordinating with the committee members and with McMahon to begin scheduling their meetings, which will probably be virtually, at least early on, which, you know, there's no issues with. So, excited to get this started. Been over a year in the making. I think we started talking about this in April or May of last year.
Okay. Okay. Alright, so any more comments or questions?
Just good job putting it together.
Yes, definitely, EJ. Thank you so much for taking care of all of that. And, uh, yeah, um, I have a bottle of champagne here, so the next time I see you, I think I'll make sure I deliver it to you. Um...
I definitely don't have a second career as a recruiter, because it took me a long time.
Do we have any comments or questions from the public about this, EJ? No?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Subdivision in Land Development, the Valley Forge Green Townhomes Development, the Pulte Homes of P.A., LP, EJ. Uh, do you want me to make the motion first, or do you want to talk about it first?
Um, whatever, whatever you want to do.
Alright, I'll make the motion first. The Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 2020-22: Approving a Minor Modification to the Land Development Plan for a 32-unit townhouse complex known as Valley Forge Green and owned by Pulte Homes of P.A., LP. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. So Madeline, I made the motion and Mark seconded it. And EJ, I'm going to leave it open to you.
Alright, so what this resolution does, it approves the minor modification to the land development plan for the stormwater management plan for the site. And the reason for this is the original land development approval included an allowance of up to an additional, I think it was roughly 4,400 square feet of additional impervious coverage for sunroom and/or deck additions on the units. Now, that allowance was not enough for every single one of these units to have a sunroom and/or deck. And there was a note on the plan that basically said, if and when the developer hits that maximum, they would be allowed to go through a series of basically individual minor modifications for each unit beyond that. What the developer has instead done to kind of make it easier was to modify the stormwater management, oversize the underground basin to allow for up to an additional 7,200 square feet of impervious cover, which would be enough to allow all of the units, potentially all of the units, to have the sunroom and/or deck option. They don't anticipate that all of them will, but they, this basically oversizing of their stormwater management facility would allow that if the, you know, the people buying the units wanted those. So this had to go through an engineering review, primarily, more importantly, it had to go through the Conservation District for review. The review process on this was completed back in like February or March. This was, had been put off because it wasn't really time-sensitive and because of our virtual meetings with COVID, we were trying to push off non-urgent items. And in that process, we realized that there are some changes, cleaning up needed to be made to the HOA declarations as well, because we didn't want to run into a scenario where the developer is allowed to add these, this additional impervious coverage. But then what if five years from now, a homeowner wants to add more? So the HOA declaration is needed to be clearly updated to reflect these changes and to basically say, once that 7,200 square feet of impervious cover is reached, no more can be built in the entire development, even 10 years from now. You know, so it's clearly spelled out in the HOA declaration, so any buyers are given that, you know, as part of the, as part of the process, so they can never say that they weren't informed. And that's, uh, that's pretty much it. This is something that the developer was entitled to. They just chose to go a little bit of a different process than the notes on the plans. And we did ensure that none of these potential deck or sunrooms would encroach in the conservation easement. There are no issues with the conservation easement at all with this. So, that's, uh...
And one other thing, the...
Go ahead, Bill.
Sorry, EJ. The township has the right, but not the obligation, to enforce the HOA regulations. And the township will be keeping a running schedule of, you know, how many square feet are allotted to each unit, so that we're not misled in any way about them going over the additional 7,200. So it's in order. The facilities have already been built and they're installed in the ground.
Okay. Alright. Does anyone have any comments or questions? No?
Uh, I'm, um, I'm looking at the drawing. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Sorry about that. I wasn't sure if I was muted. Looking at this drawing, EJ, each of these townhouse buildings, for example, townhouse building number one, that entire building, which is four units, has a footprint not to exceed 7,200 square feet. Is that what they're saying?
No, the 7,200 square feet is basically a bank of additional impervious coverage that would be used up by the sunroom and deck options.
Okay, off the back of the building primarily.
It's much more than that.
Okay.
For the, for the site. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? EJ, do we have any comments or questions from the public?
Um, so we did actually receive an email question from the public pertaining to this development. It wasn't about this, this specific thing, but I'm just gonna pull it up here and read it.
Yep.
This email came from Heidi Connor, and now I can't find it, of course. Essentially, what she asked was about the development, one, the intersection of, at Ferry Lane and Paulings Road, whether that was gonna be a signalized intersection, whether they're gonna have a traffic light, a flashing light, or a four-way stop. The answer to that is it's a four-way stop. And she also asked about when the old utility poles were gonna be removed. Some new poles were put in, and there's still some old ones in place. One of them was damaged in the storm from last month. So we've been told kind of unofficially by, they're Pico poles, so we have to wait for Pico to get in there and remove the old ones. We've been told kind of unofficially mid-July, they would be in there to remove those.
Okay. Alright.
The public got a question on that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the public? That's the only one?
Um, yes, on that matter, yes.
Okay. Alright. So there's been a motion and a second, and there's been questions and comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye.
Alrighty. Additional business. EJ, do we have any additional business?
Um, I just wanted to inquire about the status of the July work session and request that we cancel that, that the board is agreeable to that.
I'm okay with that, EJ. I know that you, you've requested vacation, and I know that you're, you just bought a house and you're gonna be moving. I'm okay with that. I don't know if we have anything that's that pressing. Any comments from the board? I mean, is there something that everybody, anyone would desperately want to have a workshop meeting this month? No?
No.
No.
Okay. So we will cancel our July workshop meeting. Do we have anything else under additional business? EJ?
EJ, I did want to ask you, EJ, I would like to start, the EAC has looked at the tree ordinance, we've done another workshop on it. I'd like to move it through our commission, so I don't know if planning is next, or what the next step would be on that.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, we could, unless the board wanted to do it differently, I don't think this is something that the Historical Commission would need to review, unless I'm missing something. I mean, we could send it to them if they want, but I would think primarily the Planning Commission and maybe the Open Space Commission. Even the Open Space, I'm not sure about. That's really kind of up to the board. I mean, definitely Planning Commission. So...
Is that something that we would do this month, or would we wait until August for that? Susan, where are we with that? Would it, would it need to wait until August?
See, I don't feel like it should wait, and I feel like if they don't want to meet and review it, they don't have to. Mike Bauer has been very involved with it, so maybe they've already weighed in. And they weighed in on the first round. But if they do want to wait, and I don't want to keep delaying it.
Okay. So, EJ, can we put that on the agenda for the Planning Commission this month?
Yeah, yeah, I'll send it to them. I'll also have Russ take a look at it, or TNM take a look at it. Russ, we've been working on it.
And I don't know if that made it around to the supervisors. I might have missed it, but I'd love to take a look at it, too.
Yeah, we've discussed it at like four different workshops, Bob, but I can send it to you again.
Yeah, the latest, or whatever your version is right now, I'd like to take a look at again.
Sure, and yes, okay. We're all talking over each other.
Of it? I don't think I do.
Yeah, I can send you the current version, EJ. I have a few EAC comments that I was gonna see if we had any response to. Otherwise, you know, they've kind of made comments, but we don't necessarily have like an answer to them, so it's just kind of like, yeah, that can be an issue, but...
I think I do have that. If there's no further updates than that, you just, you got comments from Steve Coons and Mike Roscoe.
Exactly, yep. And that was, that was the most recent version, the one they were commenting on.
Okay, I do have that, then.
Okay. So, um, yeah, Russ, what we're working on is we're working on a tree ordinance where we want to encourage and require some, um, like tree replacement, if you cut down a tree and that kind of stuff. And it's actually pretty extensive, and it actually looks really good. I think Susan's done a really good job on that. And any comments that you would have, I think we would absolutely appreciate. And, um, and I know that there are some comments, like the EAC was saying, we're not really quite sure how to go with this, or what to do with this. And if you have any comments or questions about that, I think we would appreciate that.
That'd be great, not to take a look at it.
Great. So...
It might actually be good, EJ, to give him the version with Steve, with the comments from the EAC, because he might have thoughts on what would be a good answer to those, you know? They raised some interesting ideas and concerns.
Yeah, they did. They really did. So, EJ, is that something that we can get onto the Planning Commission for this month?
Um...
Oh, you know what? Because they don't meet in August. They don't meet in August, do they?
I was gonna say, they're usually off in August. They've been off for a while, though, so, I mean...
Definitely checking my calendar, probably the calendar right here. Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. I mean, as Susan said, you may not take it up, but we, this is part of the, you'll have to refresh my memory. The latest version, is it intended to be a standalone ordinance, or is it an amendment to the zoning ordinance?
I forget, EJ. Have to look at it again. I think it's a standalone, but I hate to say for sure.
Yeah, because if it, if it is part of the zoning ordinance, and there's a little more formal process, and Bill, Bill or Russ, you could correct me if I'm wrong, where, you know, we have to send it to the Planning Commission. They have to have so much time to review it and provide their comments. If it's a standalone...
Right, it has to be advertised twice, too. EJ, would you send me the latest version?
Sure, can.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, when does Bill get it? Because I know Bill's supposed to get it, too. Should he get it before it goes to the...
Yeah, I'd like to see where we are.
EJ, do you want to just send it to the whole board, just so they have the most, I mean, I know Martha's reviewed it extensively. I don't know if Mark's looked at it. I think you have...
I've reviewed it. It's fine.
Yeah.
I saw the questions, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So traditionally, when does this go to, officially go to Bill? I mean, does it, is it after everybody's comments, or before?
It's after all the technical, all the technical reviews, and all the technical matters have to be resolved. And I would check it just to make sure it's legal. There've been a couple of new cases on these things, so I just want to make sure we're in line.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. That's good, too. So, perfect. Alright. Um, does anyone else have anything under additional business?
No.
No? Okay. Announcements? Um, I don't have any.
I got, I got one notice. Uh, there's an, we got an email today from, forwarded, forwarded from a Secretary of Health, and it's, uh, increased restrictions on mask use. There's, there's a new order. It should be going active, I think, either today or tomorrow. So you might want to check your emails for that, and we should probably post those on the website and on Facebook.
Yeah, Madeline's been really good about giving everybody updates on the COVID situation. And yes, there was something from the, the, um...
It came in like a half hour before our meeting, so...
Yeah, something from the governor about making masks mandatory. So yes, I think that's, that's a really good idea.
Currently, yeah.
Yeah. The only announcement that I wanted to make, and EJ, you did touch on it earlier, was the, um, uh, due date for submissions for our newsletter. If anybody would like to do anything on that deadline is August 5th, to get everything to Madeline, so she can get it together to our publisher for that. So, um, public comment, EJ?
Uh, yeah, we got one email this afternoon from John Finley asking, or basically saying, "I'm interested in any update on the zoning decision for Wawa Markets on the north end of the township." So I can provide that unless someone else wants to. I know we've talked about this before.
Uh, I'll leave that up to you, EJ, or Bill, whoever wants to chime in on that.
Um, I'll take it. I mean, the update on the zoning decision, that, you know, this month before the zoning hearing board back at, you know, the end of 2018 or beginning of 2019, for a number of variances, some of which were granted, some were denied. The developer appealed that decision and has subsequently withdrawn the appeal. And so that never actually made it to arguments, I don't think, Bill. I don't think they ever even made it to oral arguments for that, did they?
Just before the argument, the appeal was withdrawn, so the decision of the zoning hearing board is final.
Yep. That's that.
Okay.
Well, there's more. EJ, are you ready to, there's, there's more. We learned at our last meeting that the owner sold off one of the three lots containing the Rossiter House. He did reserve easements in the event that he might need access over that lot to the other two lots. Litigation continues between the owner and the developer, Whitehorse, in Chester County Court. Um, the, in my opinion, by virtue of the, of the loss of the other lot, it's, you know, it's a different project if, should they decide to come in again. So things are moving ahead, but there's no new development.
Okay. Alright, thank you. EJ, do we have any other public comment? Oh.
Can I ask Bill a question there? Bill, you said that there were easements included, I guess, on the deed. Thing encumbered it. That will still make the clock start over if somebody wanted to develop on, under the existing plan. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, it's, it would be, it would depend on, you know, what comes in. And, um, but my feeling would be that the approved plan was for so many acres, and the new plan is gonna be for substantially less than that. I don't have the acreage at hand as to how much is lost, but seems to me it's a different-looking project if it only has, you know, two lots as opposed to three. And I think it would be my opinion that they need to start from scratch. Now, you know, I'm not all-knowing and all-seeing in these things. He may come in and say, "I have an easement to go over that lot, which is all I needed the last time, so it's a rough equivalent." But without getting into too much detail, uh, you know, I would press for there being a new plan requirement, you know, for, for review.
Yeah, I think I, I think I happen to agree with that, too, but I think that remains to be seen, so...
I think we're kind of wait-and-see at the moment.
Yeah.
There could be litigation for another year at this rate.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's true. So, EJ, is there any other public comment?
Uh, there is not. I have one more thing... Uh, there is not. I have one more thing that I forgot to ask earlier, and it's very minor, if I may. Who's available to sign checks tomorrow?
Me.
Martha, anyone else?
Uh, I can if you need me to, EJ.
Okay. All right. I will not be in tomorrow. Madeline will and, and the chief, so if, if you're available, I will try to have one of them coordinate with you.
Okay.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'll be, I'll be here and, uh, I'll be around all day. So.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. We don't have any pending items? And, uh, any more public comment, any other comments, anything anybody wants to say before I make a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Everyone, I think it was a great meeting, and, uh, Russ, it was nice to. Even though not in person, so.
Glad to be a part of it.
Okay. All right. See you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye for everybody. Have a good weekend.
Bye. Happy Fourth.
Yes, happy Fourth of July.
Happy holidays. Happy Fourth.